Anderson, I've had some discussion as to whether we would go with the 1% water-only increase or keep it the same. A little form of delay so we can either...
One minute, another.
Yes, correct.
I still have my opinion last time that we'll leave it where it is, the surplus that we'll have and that will continue to accrue with the rates where they are. Would these... Does that make a motion to approve it at no time?
How much do we have in the surplus? We did build in $12,000 instead of aside and part of it for the board to, for future in case we had any unforeseen errors.
Angela wants the surplus, do you know?
Not off the top of my head.
Well, we need to continue to build the reserve, but we also need to put the new controls in the plant and the updates that we need to do. We're not going to be able to do the updates at this rate.
Yeah, there were... Does there ever structure issues based on the calculations?
I can't hear you.
Based on the calculations that were presented, we were going to continue to run a surplus and continue to accrue. One concern was, and I don't believe we'll reach that at the, leaving the rates where they are, but at some point in time, we face a cap out on the amount we're able to reserve. I think we probably would spend that, but...
In this year, what we budgeted for was our debt service for the bonds that we owe, also to purchase a new water truck as the one we have is starting to rust out quite considerably. They would like to take the rear end off of it to make it into a, the box is all this, the motor's still sound, but the box is not. So we converted to a salt and brine truck for the winter and replace it with a new water truck. And we also have controls that need replaced, so. And those sort of major items look out this time of year. Do you have anything else to add to that, Scott?
Well, that's what we have talked about a second for this round of the year, but we also continually have wells. The wells are 22 or 23 years old, I have three of them that need to be pulled and cleaned this fall. We have high-service pumps that aren't pumping near the gallons they were 16 years ago when I started. They're going to need to be pulled, serviced and cleaned. I have no idea on the cost of that. Wells are about four grand apiece. And those high-serves, they're inside, it'd be kind of time-consuming, I would imagine, 1,500 to 2,000 apiece to have those, depending on what type of problems we find. So with our system, our plan, we built in 1962, added on in 1989, you know, we continually have things having other business. Things are not cheap. There's 85,000 that put the well in two years ago. You know, we may be looking at another well here in the next five years, it'll probably be over 100,000. So we need to try to keep up because, you know, I'm always for, if I have more money, we can find places to spend.
Just an accessory, Scott. In Iowa, the chapter 23B and is hereby amended as follows. 23.01 Park Board, there shall be a Board of Park Commissioners for the city consisting of seven citizens of legal age, appointed by the council to serve with the pleasure of the council for overlapping terms of six years. The terms of three board commissioners shall end on December 31st of 2015, and the terms of four board commissioners shall end on December 31st of 2017. These terms shall then be up for reappointment for six-year terms. If a seat is vacated before the end of the term, the new appointee would fill the remainder of that term. Section 2, the present number of commissioners is five, and seven would better serve the citizens of the community and also make it easier to comply with the gender balance laws passed January 1st, 2012. Section 3, if any section, provision or part of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such adjudication shall not affectability of the ordinance as a whole or any section, provision or part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section 4, any ordinance or portions of ordinance is in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed to the minimal extent necessary to conform with this ordinance. Section 5, this ordinance shall be in effect from and after its final passage, approval and publication is provided by law. All other provisions not amended shall remain in effect. I have a motion in a second. Does anyone else have any comments to take note? Councilmember Lefebvre.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Fauch.
Aye.
And Councilmember Crumlin.
Aye.
First reading of ordinance number 4, 14. Agenda item number 13, Don Blackford did a special stop sign of Ford and Lynn. Don used to vote here.
Hello, I would like to have the city council consider or discuss putting two stop signs at the intersection of Fourth and Lynn. Just want to make sure that when kids come out on the dirt bikes out of that trail, that, you know, they're safe and they don't run into the traffic. They can be wise, just consider it. That's it, thanks.
That's the dumbest thing I've ever heard.
Folks, please be considerate. That's my point.
You know what, man, I do.
Does the city want to...
Logan is my address.
You're outside of the city limits.
What is your address?
Folks, please.
What street?
What street?
You guys, what's yours and mine?
It's been brought up before. That would be my...
We'd be doing this public and the street department and the park department for a minute.
Okay, thank you. The suggestion by Mike Fauch was to kind of have the police department watch up there for a while and see what's going on, and he said that they would be glad to do that along with the city personnel as they're going up there and checking on things to review and see if we've got any problems, and then we can discuss further. Is that all right with the council? Just take that route?
Yes.
Okay, just let us know if we have any problems.
Yep.
Agenda item number 14, citizens' questions and comments. Suzie, come on.
Suzie, Bob.
You want to come on up here, please, Suzie? You can speak so everyone can hear you.
I just had a question on that stop sign being, are motorbikes even allowed on the trails?
I don't. Not that I know of, yet.
So I don't understand what the problem would be. Why would he think that motorcycles are going to come up out of the trails if they're not allowed?
Well, usually in a park trail, you live at the trailhead, they usually have some type of indication that you're approaching the street or something like that. I don't know if it would be stop signs on the street because, one, coming up Fourth Street like that in winter time is no different than 30 hours over here, right? You ain't going to make it to the top.
You're not going to make it.
That was probably out. But the thing that I, and I've kind of discussed this since we've seen it on the agenda, was that maybe the indication needs to be inside the trailhead, and we need to clear the trees out, open that area up, so that they have more viewing of the street as the cars.
But is there motorbikes allowed on the trail?
I haven't seen any rules, but I would say no.
I agree. I wouldn't think so.
I think it should be put back.
Most blocking trails that we've seen, we go through the background, at every intersection they have stop signs on the blocking trail.
Yeah.
It's informing that there's a street, stop them. That would be probably the solution.
I would assume so, too. I just didn't feel that there was motorbikes allowed. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just had a quick comment, or question, actually. Skip, you said you removed the minutes from that council meeting in March or whenever on your authority as a councilman. Is that correct?
Yes.
The minutes that were...
The ones you pulled from the paper?
That they'd be delayed.
Right, right. You did that on your, you said that was on your authority as a council member.
Right.
Where in Logan code or state code do you find that power? Can you... You couldn't. Well, I can. Chapter 17.03, dealing with the council, titled "Exercise of Power." The council shall exercise a power only by the passage of a motion, a resolution, an amendment or an ordinance in the following manner, and it gives it out. Basically, you have to have a motion, a second, and then a vote on it. That's the only way that any power is exercised by anybody on this board. Does what you say conform to what that says?
I'll have to review it.
I just reviewed it for you. I just read it. It's a sentence long. It has to take place here, is what it says. So do you have authority to act on your own in such a way?
My request to the paper was to withhold that till we had a chance to see it. They were being sent before we ever even got a chance to see them.
Right. Do you have the power to request that from the paper?
I did.
You did what? You did have the power or you did do it?
I did do it.
Did you have the power to do it? Do you have the power and authority to do that?
I believe I did.
Do you believe you have it now?
Yes.
Okay. And what? The council shall exercise a power only by the passage of a motion, a resolution, an amendment or an ordinance. Do you still believe you have the power to act outside of this body?
I made a request to the paper with hope we know that.
Do you have that authority? Do you have that authority as a councilman to act outside this board?
That's all I can tell you, Andy.
Don't call me Andy, that's not my name.
Andrew.
Thank you. So you can't answer if you have that power or authority or not? Mike, do you have that authority? Danny? Ms. Clark? No? 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 Okay. Do you have that authority, Mr. Johnson?
The council shall exercise a power only by the passage of a motion, resolution, an amendment or an ordinance. That's the basis for the authority granted to you, that we, the citizens, grant you to do our business.
Do you have authority to act outside of the bounds of this council room when you're in a meeting? Act on behalf of the city, just on your own?
All I did was request that that be...
That, yes, you requested. So can I just go down there and, can I go down there and request them not to publish the minutes?
Yes, you could.
I could.
Whether you would do it or not is up to Mary, is up to the paper. I requested that they held them off till we see them. We have not seen those minutes.
So your request really, you're saying your request had no authority behind it? You were requesting as a private citizen?
Well, I was a council member when I...
You were a councilman, but you're saying you had no authority as a councilman and weren't doing it as a private citizen?
I made no claim that it was a decision of the council. It was Skip Johnson calling, saying, I have not seen those minutes.
So Skip Johnson, councilman, but without the authority to request those minutes, be pulled.
There was a voicemail message left on an answering machine, Mary's office.
Okay.
We've got to have those minutes.
All right. I guess, yeah, that would be, that's enough.
Jim, I don't look 201 North, but you probably haven't memorized by now. I didn't really have a question until Pam asked her question. You cited a lot that you were not getting input from the city attorney. First of all, you know what? I want to apologize to you guys, because when I came up here before, I was so livid at the lack of evidence that you have providing her, that I did not act very professional. And I want to, I want to apologize for you that, because I was ticked, and still am, but trying to be more professional. So my question to you is, having said that you kept saying we're not getting any input from the attorney, how many times did you request for him to come to the council meeting? None. If the input from the attorney was so important to you, you as a council has the authority, and Randy can request his presence at any time. So if that is such a big issue, why did you not request his presence?
I did. I spoke to Randy about his feedback that he was given, particularly pertaining to the conflict of interest issues, and no information was given. No reply, no response, no information. This was basically, my perception was withheld from me. And when contacting him and getting that same cold response from him, okay?
Can you guys hear that? Could you start over? Good response.
Basically, upon contacting him and getting a basically cold response, that basically said, withhold your judgment till you read the letter. I said, well, you haven't even contacted us. Have you already read it? I've already wrote it? Yes, I've already wrote it. Okay, why didn't you correspond to this? Why didn't you not contact us about these allegations, which I believe are untrue? Why did you not reach out to those that were accused and at least hear our side of the story? There were only four individuals. You know, four council members were approached. And at that point in time, you basically said, well, I get my information from Randy and the clerk. That's who I've talked to on this. I've received information. So at that point in time, I waited, I gave him the benefit of the doubt, I read the letter, which again, I believe did not represent us well, did not paint a pretty picture, that again tainted the view of the council, and particularly me personally, as well as Wes and Dee and Nick that were on there, and there were lies. And he didn't bother to find, and he told me legally, I'm not painting you into a corner. Read it. It alleged this and alleged that. He didn't say that we did anything, but he falls that up with a, well, this is a pattern of behavior that is being demonstrated by a council. Okay? Pattern is basically decided on by untruths. The pattern is developed by lies.
Perception. Perception.
For a lot of people, okay, no.
Everybody believes it's true, that the information is...
It's true.
And it was not.
Okay, wow, well, that remains to be seen whether it was true or not. But you've had a chance, time after night. I have set up here, matter of fact, Dee, I set up a softball for you last week. I mean, you should have hit that out of park. Okay? I've come up here and I hear rumors in the community, and most of my questions are, I take rumors and I pose them to you and give you a chance to say, no, that's not true. And you, until tonight, you have refused to answer questions.
Yeah. And you know why?
No, I don't, because you've just told me you have a consultant attorney, yet he's sitting right here, won't answer a damn question, and now all of a sudden you want to answer things. And if you'd have gave us that answer six months ago, we could have avoided half of this.
You're not listening.
I want to clarify something with Dee, because I asked her a question about conflict of interest last week. And I want to clarify it, because I want it on the record. I set up a softball for you. I said, Dee, do you feel in retrospect that it was a conflict of interest for you to sit on the board while the property deal was on? Correct?
You did.
And you refused to answer that. He never purchased the property. So how was it a conflict of interest? And you refused to answer that? Just so it's on the record, Wes never purchased that property. Still has not been purchased, but it's for sale, so if anybody's interested. I mean, we, not everything we do, we're not out to get you guys. We just want some answers and we want some truth. That's all.
It doesn't appear that way, Jim. It doesn't. When you come up this hot and with the others that you're meeting with, okay, when you have your meetings hereafter, basically how to, you know, get rid of the council, how to do something like that.
We're making no bones about it.
I know.
We want control of this council back, because we feel that you're out of line, we feel that you've lied to us on several occasions.
But you claim it as a public meeting and it's high ground, and you ask certain people that maybe aren't of your same opinion to leave.
Who?
He's talking about the officer.
We actually believe he's a city employee. Do you really want the perception of him being here, meeting with that group?
Is it a public meeting?
No.
No, not to a degree.
Should we be charging him more?
If you want to.
If it's not a public...
Because we can have, believe me, we've got plenty of places to hold public meetings. Right? I mean, believe me, we've got people volunteering, we've got people throwing money on tables, and we've got people opening up their buildings.
I'm just asking, you're stating the high ground here.
Stating the high ground here?
Yeah, that's not what's happening.
How am I stating the high ground?
Basically, that it's a public meeting, that you're inviting everybody to participate, everybody that's with you, and...
When did I bring up a public meeting?
They actually said, anybody that wants to stay at the board to discuss the information is welcome to stay. I'm sorry, but the officer has no part of it. He's your buddy. I mean, come on.
Irregardless, first of all, that young man has every right to be friends with whoever he wants to.
He does.
To tell you the truth, I have been acquaintances with Johnson since they moved here. For the most part, they're pretty wonderful people, have some great kids. I totally and vehemently disagree with everything he has done in the last few months, and I will fight him tooth and nail on it. But that doesn't mean he's a vile nasty person and that we need to run him out of town or anything like that. I agree. I think it's time for him to leave the council.
I understand, but you need to understand that it has gotten out of hand, and our kids have been targeted.
You have left it get out of hand.
Okay.
Wait a minute, been targeted?
Targeted.
Been targeted? Well, I, I think targeted is probably a strong term, and I would hope that's not true.
You can hope all you want, but when somebody's videotaping my 15-year-old daughter in the backyard, it's not funny.
No, I agree. That's not funny.
Okay, it's gone too far at that point.
Have you filed a police report on that?
I have talked to Elmer.
Have you filed a report?
Yes.
Okay. That's good. You should. I would, too.
Maybe this incitement is what's leading to these things.
What inciter? We are asking you questions and you're refusing to answer them, until a few tonight.
Right. And I've been approached by people that think we've made this claim on that it's a personal issue, instead of a personnel issue, which is what we've talked about this whole time. Any response I've given is, we're not prepared, because we have not had counsel, to address a personnel issue at this point in time. Not a personal issue.
Skip, I'll be honest with you. I am so disappointed in what you brought forward tonight. To me, what I see is, oh, my feelings were hurt, you're fired. That's what I see. All right. Randy's begging me to quit, so...
Just one question, and it kind of is a follow-up to the council's authority outside of the scope of the meeting. Just one direct question to Skip. Did you direct Marilyn to post ads in the Daily Nonpareil and the Dewey and Raster for the position of city administrator?
I made a recommendation that we do that. I copied in all the council and mayor and everybody, Mike, you were even in on that one, yeah, because he was in state at that point in time.
Okay. That's all I need.
Kevin, which is 106 West Sixth Street, Logan. I feel bad for myself that I haven't been involved as much as I should until I heard what was going on. You know, I've been to the last probably five or six, and that was after Angela got fired, really. But what I've seen since I've been here is just, I've lived riding the car all day long and having a bad habit of listening to public radio, or not public, I should say, talk radio. And this reminds me so much of what we hear of congressmen and senators, and you never get an answer to anything. And I never thought it would happen in Logan. And that's what I'm seeing, is just, you never get a straight answer, always dodging the issue. Just answer our questions. I mean, when they put something on the agenda and you just take them off just because you don't like what they, what it is, it's just really, it makes me sick. So I hope you rehire Angela.
I'm Liz Por, and I live over here on North Second Avenue. I guess I want to ask Nick, how many years have you lived here, Nick?
Nine.
Okay. Dee?
Talking to Mike.
And Skip?
Five.
Mike?
Forty, forty-five.
Mr. Crumlin?
Since 1963.
I've lived here in Logan for 21 years, and previously I was born and raised in Missouri Valley. When I moved to Logan, I knew quite a number of people, but I never took this as my hometown. I always thought of Missouri Valley as my hometown, and I always knew that there were people that were born and raised here in Logan and who not owned the city, but took the city as their own and wanted only good from their city. I understand where you come from and how you want to help the city, but when you have good people here that come night after night to care about the city and what happens to it now and in the future, and you don't listen to them and your heart's not open to them, then there's a problem. There would be a problem if I was sitting in your seat. There should not be a problem to answer these people in a timely and decent and appropriate manner. I want to know, Skip, because I've never met her, is your wife here tonight?
No, I don't believe so.
Has she been here since all of this ruckus has started?
Several council meetings, yes.
But she's not, I mean, I've heard stories about how she's the one that is pushing you to do all of this stuff.
Those stories as well.
Would you like to answer to that?
They're not true.
Then why isn't she here speaking on her behalf?
We have a sick child at home tonight.
Thank you.
She hasn't been here since Angela was fired.
Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number 15, the chamber update.
This next Saturday, August 25th, we have a... Did I state my address, Dee? August 25th, the chamber has planned, about two months ago, we started to do the car show, motorcycle cruise, this Saturday. It'll start at 11 o'clock, registration's from 11 to 1:00, and then we'll have them filing in on Fourth Avenue and Sixth Street. And so if you come down to the park, there'll be food, music, raffles, door prizes, so if anybody would like to come, make this a success, I'd sure appreciate it.
How many cars are there?
I hope a lot. But I don't know the pre-registration. I mean, there hasn't been, you know, too many, but this is our first year, so this has been an learning experience for me, I'll say that, to say the least. So we're hoping for a great turnout, so, and then next year, we'll start a lot earlier.
Thank you, motion to adjourn, Councilmember Lefebvre.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Fauch.
Aye.
And Councilmember Crowe. Nice meeting you, adjourned, thank you, everyone.